It's like we're all set, so we can go ahead and get started. And if we can have a real call.
Trusty Marcus. Trusty Weekly.
President.
Trusty McAvoy. Vice President Walt.
Here.
President Lawson.
Here. Welcome, everybody. Si necesita traducción en español, por favor llama al nueve siete ocho nueve nueve cero cinco uno tres siete y presione ocho tres siete siete cero cuatro uno. El signo de número para la contraseña. Si asiste a la reunión en persona y necesita interpretación al español, solicite un transmisor situado al fondo de la sala. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues of concern, whether or not the issue is on the agenda. To address the board, please complete a speaker's card available at the entrance to the room, and you can bring it up to Evelyn. If you are on Zoom, you can fill out a speaker's card that's attached. There's a link attached to the agenda. Public comments are limited to three minutes. As a reminder, the board cannot have a discussion on public comments. However, we may direct the superintendent to follow up. Okay. That brings us to changes to the agenda. Any changes? We have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you. Oral communication. We do have a speaker's card. This is for Jeffrey Shabowski, and I don't know if he's on Zoom. Jeffrey, if you're here, can you raise your hand so we can? Give you permission to speak? Not in the room either. So then we're going to move on to. Let's see, six point one approval of program management services. And then number four with coming group formerly R G M K. Is your mic on?
There we go. Bringing forward amendment to the contract with coming group formerly R G M K. To extend the term of their contract, there is no increase in price. It's for them to allow to finish. Projects they're currently working on under the already approved budgets and projects.
So we're just recognizing that the name of the corporation has changed. It's an extent and extending the term of the contract, but no additional fees.
No, cool.
Any other questions?
No, it makes a lot of sense to me to. Extend the term so that they can complete the work that they've agreed to. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Let's see. Oh, thank you. We are on seven point one discussion update on the progress of the facilities master plan and next steps.
Good evening. Tonight, we're asked Aaron Jobson from Q K, the architect that's responsible for the facilities master plan. As well as Eric Van Pelt from V P C S, who is our bond program. Construction and service managers. To give an update on the facilities master plan process. Where we're at, what's been accomplished, and where we're moving forward to. See, my, did I do the mic part right? All right, I passed the first test, right? Thank you all for having here. My name is Aaron Jobson. I'm president of Q K, and we're really excited to be working with. You all in the district on the facilities master plan. It's a part of designing and planning schools that we really enjoy involves a lot of engagement with your community and identifying. What is the most important way that we can improve the schools that you have? So, excuse me, today we wanted to give a quick update on what we've been doing so far. What this overall process looks like and then what we're going to be doing next. And then the plans to come back and give you kind of periodic updates as we go through the process on on the progress. I'm going to go to the next slide, Rick. Maybe. There we go. So we always start each of our meetings with a slide like this where we talk about why, why this is important work. So really, it starts with the fact that. School facilities matter and the quality of school facilities matter to the quality of the education that happens within them. And this is a field that I've spent my career specializing in my, my whole family are teachers. Other than me, so educational design is kind of my way to contribute to that as well. And it's something that we've spent a lot of time as a company and as an industry really looking at how that, how, what that connection is. And there's a lot of research out there that talks about. The different ways in which the quality of school facilities and learning environments affect what happens within there. And that can come from simple ways of, you know, if it's really hot or really cold in a space, if it's uncomfortable, it's hard to learn. Two much more complicated things about the, the colors that we choose and views to the outside and acoustics and things like that. And so those are all things. That, that we understand and as part of our profession and that we bring to this work, but we always try to help inform folks that this is why we're thinking about this, that it really does make a difference. You know, not just in what things look like and the curb appeal, but what really actually happens in the classroom. And that we know that your, your facilities, like, like every school, the six facilities in California need improvement. And that we want to make sure that we're maximizing the impact of every dollar that we spend to, to have that improvement on the classroom. We also know that every school is different and it has unique needs. And that we need to get input from that school community to understand that. And that we really need your help. And today that means you guys, but we use the same thing. We're talking to each site committee when we're having community meetings. Whenever we get input from folks that we really value that input, and that's an important part of the process. Next, Rick. So we wanted to talk just a little bit about an overview of the process and what, what a master plan is. And really, this is the beginning of a design process for a facilities project. And so it starts with looking broadly across the whole district, really high level. We're really not looking at a huge level of detail yet, but we want to start by understanding what are the needs across the whole district? How do we plan for those long term so that every step that we take on that process of improvement we made kind of builds towards a larger vision? And we put that big picture together, but then also identifying for each of those projects, how much would they cost? And which is most important, which is going to be most impactful? Looking at them in a broad scope way, but that takes a lot of engagement, but that engagement doesn't stop there. Once a project, once you all decide we're going to go ahead with a new building here, a modernization here. Then we meet with a new, more detailed stakeholder group and talk more about exactly what that project is. Exactly what it needs to be, how we design it. And that engagement continues all the way through design, all the way down until we're picking what color the cabinets are. And making sure that they're in the right places in the room. And, and that's part of this process all the way through, and we just usually like to frame that because we don't, we don't want to talk too much in detail at this time. But also let people know that there will be a time for that. And then we'll come back and have those conversations. But at this point, we're really looking at that high level to make sure that. You all can make informed decisions about how to use the funding that you have to make that greatest impact. Next. And so that we, we know right now that that will mean that. We identify more need, more projects that we'd like to do than you have the funding to do right now. So the facilities master plan will start with that bigger pool of projects, the big purple bubble up there. And, and identify that, but we want to do that so that when there is funding, we know what to spend it on. We know what's going to be the biggest impact and that each piece builds towards that longer vision. But then from that facilities master plan, we'll be identifying individual projects that will make up the implementation plan for the funding you have. Right? So from that big pool of projects, we select which projects are they going to be the most impactful to use with the funding you have. New funded becomes available, pick new projects. And move forward. So it's, it's tended to be a living document as well. We'll, we'll complete this facilities master plan process. But then things will change in the next few years. And we'll need to come back and update that into update that vision as that context change. You know, one of the big things that we're responding to now and master plans that we're, that we're doing that maybe we're updating that were done 10 years ago, like yours is, is transitional kindergarten. You have an entirely new grade to support. So that's a huge change in context and one that, that requires that kind of update. Next. So this is our overall schedule. It's kind of a three phase process. Starts with really kind of information gathering with us, us understanding what the needs are. So that started with reviewing demographics and other data with going out and doing assessments and walks at each site. And with our first round of site committees, which we're just about to start. And those are really focused on us really explaining this process and then hearing from the staff. From you people at each site, like what, what are the needs that they see, what's most important to them? And then we'll take that information and our second phase is sort of planning and design. So we'll develop some initial ideas about what that facilities master plan might be. What needs, how we can meet those needs by making those facilities changes and updates and improvements. And we'll also be looking at all of the demographic information, capacity analysis, that kind of data that goes into the process as well. And we'll develop that preliminary kind of draft site plan, and then that gets reviewed with that site committee again in a second meeting. And we get their input on making adjustments to that, maybe looking at a few different options where that's appropriate. And then an important part of that second meeting also is getting input on which improvements that we proposed. Does, does that team see as most impactful? And then the third piece is really taking all that information and finalizing it. So that's having additional meetings with the community to kind of share out that progress. There'll also be community meetings. As we go through this process as well. In the first two phases, and then we then do cost estimating. So for each project we identify, we, we. We work with a professional estimator to determine how much that project is likely to cost. And then provide that draft for you all for your review and input and additional public input, and then put that final document together. And present it to you for approval. So that whole process, we expect to essentially take the rest of this year and into maybe early next year. To go through those different phases. Next. So these are goals that we've identified in discussions with the district already. In kind of our experience and understanding of a facilities master plan process that we want to make sure to evaluate. I won't read them all verbatim. You can, you can see them all there, but some pretty kind of high level goals that we want to make sure this process is structured to do. And that we keep in mind as we're looking at each of the facilities that we share with everyone that we interact with in this process as well. Next. So this is kind of a quick diagram of the structure of this process. We really take a strategic look to see. What is the best way to engage folks in this process all the way through? And one of the things we heard from, from your district early on is, is having kind of additional. Levels of community engagement and especially on that kind of community forum level. So there's more chances for input into the process earlier on. So we have school site committees at each school, at each school, as the name would imply. And we ask that those committees represent staff, students, parents and community members. And that their role is, is to provide information to us, but also to talk to their peers. And share information about the process and bring that input back to the committee as well. So that they're not just representing their views, but all of the, you know, as much as we can, the views of staff and students and parents and community members as a whole. For that school community. And so all that input from the school site committees comes into the district facilities master plan committee, which is really kind of our team. The Van Pelt Construction Services team and the district leadership. Kind of collecting that information from all of those different site committees. As well as district wide committees, we'll talk about educational specifications in a minute. But also the district wide teams like nutritional services, special ed, things like that, that serve. Serve, serve students across the district. We want to make sure to get their input on what their program needs are and things like that, too. And then we're also getting input and providing information to community members through where we're doing a survey to do that as well as doing some community forum meetings. And then all that comes together to, to that group to kind of coalesce, put together into a plan. And then recommends you all for approval. And of course, you're the decision making body that will approve that plan and eventually approve individual projects from that plan. Next. So this is the ideal con- composition that we'd like for that committee and kind of what we. Ask from them and what their responsibilities are. And this will be part of what we'll go over in their first meeting over the next couple of weeks. So we can see there kind of, we've got staff represented, teachers, classified staff, parents. And students as well as part of that. And we asked them to attend both of those site committee meetings to provide their input. And as I said, communicate with their peers as well. And you can see their responsibilities on the right, or to just, you know, kind of basic norms, but make sure that they're. Providing, providing input throughout the process. Next. So work we've completed to date, we've completed the facility site assessments. So those happened over the last few weeks of the summer break. And there we're, we're really walking that with the Van Pelt Construction Services team and with the district maintenance and operations team. Their input is obviously extremely valuable. They know much more about those facilities than we ever will be able to learn in a day. And so we want to make sure to get their input on about what issues that they see. And we're really looking at overall facilities condition, you know, what building systems need to be replaced, repaired, upgraded. What infrastructure issues are there? How do the finishes look? What are the restrooms? That kind of stuff? And then also site infrastructure, one of the things that we always focus on is accessibility. And making sure that they're accessible paths to the restrooms, to the parking lot, to drop off, things like that. They're identifying things that need to be upgraded and then that. The Division of State Architect will make sure that we upgrade. So we want to account from those from the beginning. And then any specific maintenance issues raised by staff, maintenance and operations team as well. We've also been kind of working in parallel with the solar projects that are ongoing as well, providing. Some preliminary input on, on locations, and then we'll be talking with the site committees about those. As well as giving them a chance to provide input to as that project kind of proceeds in collaboration with the facilities master plan and kind of in parallel with it as well. The other piece is the educational specifications. We had our first meeting held on August twentieth to establish that. And the educational specifications kind of help us. Establish a benchmark that we can evaluate each school against kind of for what each elementary school should have. So that we make sure that the same facility standards are applied to each school and that kind of sets a benchmark that we make sure everyone can get to. And identify what, what's needed at each site. And so that was, that was a good meeting with the district leadership to kind of talk through some of those things, what standards do we want to set for transitional kindergarten for? For all different kind of aspects of classrooms that we want to make sure we're upgrading everything to. And then we also identified things that need to be added on at the K eight schools as well. And for the middle schools, we'll be kind of dealing with that on an individual basis because the two middle schools are fairly different in program. And we need to really just identify with each one, what, what facilities those need. And then there's been a lot of meetings scheduled. And a lot of coordination on that, trying to get those schedules is always challenging as we're to be back to school. And all that too. It's a busy time of the year, but that's moving forward and we're getting ready to have our first site committee meetings here in the next week or two. Next. And that brings us to upcoming meetings. So the site committee means, as I said, we were originally targeting the, this week and in the next few weeks, but. It's takes a little time to get things scheduled at the beginning of the year. So we'll hopefully just start those next week or the week after. We're working on the ed spec where the plan is to put together a draft based on the input we got and bring that back to that committee in mid September. So that we have that complete or we pretty much complete. So as we go into that second phase of, of synthesizing, analyzing, designing that information, we have that as a reference and benchmark. We're working with the district team to send out a survey to get some community input on facilities needs. And then we'll be looking to schedule some community forums probably later in September. Where we can share out about this process and collect information there as well about general facilities needs across the district, both virtually and in person. I think that's pretty much it. So that's the update for today, and I think I'll hand it over to Eric to talk about some of the other projects that are happening kind of in parallel with this.
Thanks, Eric. Aaron. Eric Van Pelt, Van Pelt Construction Bond Program Manager. So Aaron talked about from the high level, what we're looking at with the facilities master plan. Also, over the summer, we looked at some of the quick start project opportunities for the district as well. And we looked at those in a little bit more granular, granular detail. The, the few, the two projects that we mainly looked at was the lighting assessment, which will be bringing to the September twelfth board meeting. For review on the possible energy contract for the improvements in the lighting. And then also the HVAC project, potentially adding a new HVAC. And cooling to classrooms throughout the district. Um, if you can go to the next slide, Rick. Perfect. So lighting assessment is going to be pretty self explanatory, but we didn't want to get into a little bit of detail on the HVAC assessments. That we did over the summer. First, from a high level, you'll see on the side kind of some of the. The general considerations to think of when you're thinking of an HVAC rollout of this size. First is the timeline of design for assessment and permitting HVAC. These projects for adding cooling have to be reviewed by the Division of the State Architect. So there is a permitting and design time there. Power capacity for PG&E. This is one of the things that we did review this summer. We have at least four sites that are going to be short on power for PG&E. So they will require new PG&E gear in order to implement cooling if the board gives that direction. Those PG&E assessments. And improvements take almost 12 months to get going from PG&E. That's really a timeline that's, it's very tough to control because PG&E has their own, they work on their own timeline. Um, there's additionally. Since the sites did not have cooling already, there's going to be required structural upgrades and roofing upgrades to house the. Cooling equipment. So that is another consideration to take into effect. And then also with these equipment ads, these are not equipment replacements. So DSA will make us do. Twenty percent of the cost of the project to include eight ADA upgrades throughout the campus. So that from a high level tells you that it's not just as simple as popping in an air conditioning and firing it up. There's a lot of assessment and a lot of different things that go into the installation of HVAC and cooling units and sites that did not have them originally. The second thing to understand is the use of the classrooms. These can, these construction projects are not projects that can be during, during the school year. It's not safe and it's not feasible to do them. So these are targeted summer projects that happen during the summer. And you can see that there's considerations that go with that is the, the short summer timelines and the availability of labor and material. And that's just a, so you understand that. You're not going to be able to do 16 sites of cooling in one summer. That's, the, the task would be impossible. So. What we did, if you can go to the next slide, right? Is we wanted to just kind of give some high level options, and this is just for, for kind of thought process tonight. And we'll bring back some, some, another presentation for direction with even more detail. So these are some temporary options for an interim solution. One is desk grounded classroom fans or desk classroom fans. I'm sorry, not mounted. These are the quickest to implement. They do have less cooling effect because they do not produce cool air. They just move air and use evaporation to cool. Um, there's no filter changes. There's no real effect on M and O. Some of the cons are sounds and disruption and movement. And like I said, no, no actual cool air. The option number two would be temporary portable HVAC units. These actually do provide cool air. This would be the most effective cooling solution for the classrooms. Because they provide, because they actually do provide cool air and circulated at the same time. This is a quick implementation. You source the, the units and get them out there to install, but it's not the fastest. It's not as fast as putting fans out. They also have automatic controls that are controllable. Some of the downsides are obviously the cost. Each classroom would require two units and they're about $5,000 each. And potential power upgrades as well. They also utilize a large amount of floor space and they have some high maintenance requirements. So maintenance would be. Required to go out and change filters. They'd be required to dump condensate bins and to keep them running on a day to day operations. For day to day operations. Option three is obviously the no, no action, which is continue how, how things are at the moment. You go to the next slide, Rick? Kind of, we mapped out what we think is possible. Would be summer one would be three district sites and then five district sites. Basically, a, a per summer, after the first summer. We say summer one for three district sites. There's a possibility we could get that up to five. It just really depends on how many, how much. Structural upgrades are required at each site. And that will drive how much labor we need for the summer to complete that from the different, from the various contractors around the Bay Area. So you can see here again. It's not a simple process. It's not something that you can just add an HVAC unit to a classroom. There's requirements with DSA. There's requirements with the local Bay Area air quality management districts. On what kind of equipment can be used. There's other works like structural upgrades, roofing upgrades and ADA upgrades that go into these prod, these HVAC. And cooling projects. So we can go to the next slide, Rick. So our plan right now, after we completed the assessments of this summer for HVAC and cooling additions. Is we're going to come back to the board in September. With a more robust presentation on HVAC and cooling. We're going to present some options on if then ask for direction. On if the board would want to start these HVAC cooling projects as well. It's also important to note, we did not get into finances on this deck. That's going to be in the next stack as we complete our cost estimates for the sites. But the initiative to actually add cooling to every classroom in the district is likely going to be north of 50 to 60 million dollars. So it will be a heavy investment from the bond program if that is what the board decides to do. So we wanted to prime those quick start projects and get them moving in the right direction. We also wanted to prepare the board for the HVAC discussion that's going to come and what that entails.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Did, did you want to add something, Rick? Okay, so we have a couple of speakers cards, but let's. Ask questions. Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. Certainly, the last couple of weeks, we've been getting even more emails and texts and phone calls about cooling the classrooms. And you know, it happens certainly every kind of August, September, and then May, June, you know, our big month, sometimes it goes into October. And then, you know, we have the pleasant winter times, but anyway, so it's completely relevant. And I know, Rick, I've been sending you messages and I know I've been hearing from lots of people. So, so thank you for dialing in on that. I mean, it's sobering and it's sort of what we've been talking about. I think, you know, our teachers and students would like this done yesterday. And so, you know, we've got a couple of teachers in the, in the audience right now. So I do think the, the quicker we can move, the better. On this, I mean, we have to have the conversation about the costs and all of that. So with the 50 to 60 million, I was curious. Does that include the roofing upgrades and that sort of thing or just the units? What, what does that actually include?
That projects the full project costs. And like I said, we're still wrapping up the final cost estimates based on everything that we've put together over the last couple of months. But yeah, that, that's going to be somewhere, somewhere in the, the 50, 60 million dollar range, maybe a little bit higher, maybe a little bit lower. But that, those are, that represents total project costs. Yes.
And then. I'm assuming that, you know, the additional energy. Use that we do, we're also talking about the tandem solar that we'll want to put in to accommodate that. So we're not having our utility bills go out the roof.
Yes, this will increase your electric consumption, which will have an impact on your solar and your, your bill.
Right. So that'll need to be incorporated then in terms of sizing solar and, you know, thinking about it. But I will say. You know, when I was out there talking to lots of community members and staff and students and everyone else, I mean, this was the top priority in our school district was. We got to get the classrooms more comfortable because the kids can't learn and the teachers can't teach in that environment. So. You know, I, I think we're just going to have to bite the bullet. We'll want to do it as cost effectively as possible, but. You know, I don't know what kind of direction we want to give today, but it truly is the, the highest priority thing that I've been hearing about. Other than, you know, solar and, and being energy efficient, which is kind of in combination with that really. I've got a few other questions, but I think you, did you have more on this?
I have, I have a lot to say. I want to say it later, just very quick clarifying question for that estimate. How many classrooms are we talking about?
Um, that's a rough estimate. And again, that's not the final estimate. That's a rough estimate by site. So basically. Assuming that you would do every classroom at every site.
Right. I'm asking for the N. How many classrooms do not have air conditioning today that would need air conditioning?
That I did not bring tonight. I would have to go back and look at my information for that.
Rough estimate. Are we talking like 50, 100, 200?
Right now. I think we're somewhere around 25% of our classrooms have AC. So we're looking at 300 plus classrooms.
And, and that's including the, so you've got our 12 school sites. You, you said 16 sites, but I think really this 12 school sites plus the two sites where the charter schools are. And then I guess we were looking at the other two that we're leasing out right now. Okay. So we could prioritize. Well, I mean, one, it'd be nice to prioritize those that. Are getting hotter because some of them just have more sun facing windows and that sort of thing. I mean, it's really interesting when you go around to classrooms. Even those without air conditioning, some of them, yeah, they're a little warm, but they're maybe in the, you know, mid to high seventies. But then you go into some of them that are in the mid to high eighties. So anyway.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. And that, a lot of exactly what you said. The way that the sun hits them, the sun facing, the type of roofing that's on the buildings, that all impacts that. So. If you did, if we do want to start talking about priorities, that could definitely be something that we look at.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, that, that's good for now. I mean, I have a couple of other questions, but I'll wait till speakers and other people.
Yeah. And then the only thing I wanted to clarify was that. Then, when the assessment comes back and sort of the recommendations, some of the sites have just had major.
then when the assessment comes back and sort of the recommendations, some of the sites have just had major upgrades over the last, you know, seven or eight years, have new HVAC in there. Um, and just sort of, if you could help us understand, you know, what's the ad for those sites um to be able to, they're probably the ones that have air conditioning, actually. Um, you know, do they need the additional power? Do they need the uh structure upgrade? Like, wha- what does it take for those sites? Because I would imagine that that might be, you know, less of a lift to be able to get there.
Absolutely. And I would also think that with the the sites that do need the PG and upgrades, obviously would kind of slide back to the next summer as you wait for that PG and E timeline and so forth. And so we'll work through all that as far as the recommended recommendation on schedule and 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 series as well.
Yeah, and the hard part will be how does this interleave with the facilities master plan? Because we certainly wouldn't want to do a major upgrade for a place where we're about to major upgrade yet, you know, again.
That a- and that's the precarious part that you need to be, that we're going to have to be really careful on here because as we're entering into this major uh major facilities master plan, you don't want to spend a million dollars on air conditioning on buildings that you're gonna move, tear down, or something like that with the master plan. So that's kind of this balance that we're going to have to strike with the master plan and the quick start HVAC is trying to make sure that we don't waste money in that way.
Yeah. And I guess just to kind of build a little bit on what Elisa was saying around prioritizing, I maybe, maybe there are different tiers of classrooms where there's some that are, you know, extremely hot and shade and fan alone wouldn't be enough versus somewhere, maybe just adding shade to the windows would help. Somewhere fans would would help and I I don't, you know, you're not going to have all the answers in just a couple of weeks, but like we could start thinking about that of how we could sort of tier the work.
And some of the parents that did email did suggest to look at district wide and those classrooms that are really hot, really warm, really warm. And then the classrooms, as you alluded to, the the new classrooms and even the two story buildings, you know, the two story buildings that are in existence right now, they do have the air conditioning on the top floor. But they were built plumbed in case we're going to put air conditioning on the first floor. So.
Four sites that uh need the PG and E upgrades? Uh, you can get back to me if I was just curious which ones they are because it sounds like those then it would take at least a year and a half to get.
I will uh dig through my notes here. Uh, my colleague Ben did the assessment and I will dig through his notes and find the four sites. I'll get it to Rick and he can get it back to the to anybody who wants to see it.
Um, and then just on the same note on electrical upgrades, um, besides the four sites that may need an upgrade, have we done the assessment for the other sites to see if anything else is needed? And if so, is that cost already part of the full project or is that going to be a separate cost?
Yeah, when we bring that forward, we'll bring the cost to you for the full project for any electrical upgrades that need to go into that project as well.
So we'll take speakers now. Okay. Um, so Stephanie Vance, come on up. You have three minutes.
Option one, two, three. Yeah, that was helpful, wasn't it?
Yeah, hit the button on the right. There you go.
All right, I am, good evening. I am, I'm going to put my timer on right now. I'm Stephanie Vance. For those of you who do not know me, thank you, um, board and Dr. Baker for letting me speak today. Um, I'm here. I have been in the district as an employee for twenty-two years. This is my thirtieth year of teaching. I've had the honor of being at three different schools and four different classrooms. So I want to speak to these options as the stopgap. Um, the fans and in the classroom, that is a good idea, but it's also not the best idea because I'm speaking from experience where I've had four box fans going where I've had to use a portable microphone over and really honestly, that doesn't work. Today I had to leave school because I was ill from being in my room. Now, I am at North Star. I have a very unique situation where I have a corner building. I had get morning sun and afternoon sun. So I know I have a unique position. However, the portable HVACs, I have other solutions that I want to present to you. One of the things that would be helpful for teachers to have is an OSHA um approved thermometer in each room. We don't have any idea of how hot our classrooms get. And I know as of July of twenty twenty-four, that um indoor heat protection just went into effect. So having the teachers to be able to monitor how hot their classrooms get will help us to keep the children safe as well as ourself. Right now, we don't have any access to know how hot our rooms really get. This would be one of those things that would be helping us to protect ourselves as well as the children. The other thing I presented to you, I sent the um estimate that I had done on reflective uh film for the windows. Having you, the district and the facilities earmark those particular classrooms that are getting the direct sun both in the morning and the afternoon and prioritizing those and having not the HVAC system right away, but getting that reflective film, that would be one of those things that could be could be done mu- much uh more efficiently and less expensive than those HVAC systems. I know all of us want to have a nice cool air conditioning. However, that film on windows could actually uh make the inside temperature so much better than possible HVACs. Again, I know that's what we all want, air conditioning, but having that reflective film, I'm bringing that solution to you as something that could be done right away in the next couple of months. Um, I've also uh again, shared with you that I looked at my particular classroom and some different uh costs of what that would be just for mine. That's less expensive than the HVAC system. All right. Um, again, I'm here for all of the teachers, not just me. Please think about that as a measure to do something quickly to help us in these next couple of months. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Really appreciate you bringing um possible solutions too, instead of just complaints. It's always helpful to have.
No complaints. I'm here for solutions.
And I know, I know your, I know your classroom gets hot, so.
Yeah, it surely does. Yeah, thank you. You know, one thing that would be good is, um, you know, we have the longer term stuff, Eric, that you were talking about. But you know, maybe there is an opportunity for some of the shorter term. I mean, you have the option one, two, and three. Some of those look a little expensive and like Stephanie was saying, kind of noisy, but maybe there is an opportunity to look at all the classrooms and get feedback. And we're, you know, and maybe we just have to bite the bullet and spend a little money because it is going to be several years before these classrooms get the long term cooling effect. So if you could, I think Stephanie's quotes, you know, for her classroom were like between a thousand and three thousand for that classroom. You wouldn't have to do every classroom, right? Plus you probably have more wind. Well, no, I think. Right. Yeah, but anyway, the the point is, is that that might be one solution for a few of the classrooms that are really getting beaten up by the sun, right? And then maybe there's some fans. I I I think it's worth it because particularly you know, as we move into the spring of this year, we're not going to have done anything permanent more, right? And then maybe by next year, you might have some, but anyway, it's going to take a while. So and I don't know if the bond pays for that or if we have to pay for that out of our other um, you know, school facility money. Um, we'd have to look at that. Right? Okay. And and then the one thing, the only other thing is like on some of those classrooms, I was curious about the cooling screens if um they could like if that building got torn down, could those be taken off and used on other windows? I don't know. Um, I think it they're probably on there more permanently, but anyway.
Um, I'd like to take our other speaker and then we can finish the discussion. Um, uh, Kirsten McMullin is on Zoom, so we can um. Hi Kirsten, you can go ahead and unmute. Perfect. Go ahead.
Hello. So most of what I would want to say has already been said. I'm a parent to a seventh grader, um, actually in Ms. Vance's class. And I just wanted to encourage short term solutions for this problem, not just for this one classroom, which from my perspective is extraordinarily hot compared to any other classroom I've been in at the school. Um, but for any classroom that has this problem, we shouldn't wait on what will take a while, which is to solve the problem properly with air conditioning and HVAC solutions, but find interim solutions for the hottest classrooms in the district. And I don't know how you determine which ones those are. But pick your top ten percent hottest classrooms and buy buy air conditioning units for those, apply the film. I don't know what else. It it may be specific to the classroom itself, but there needs to be short term solutions in addition to the long term solution so that the kids who are in those rooms right now can learn effectively and also so that our teachers don't get sick. It's just so disruptive anytime students or teachers are out because of, I mean, in this case, heat related illness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, that was it for speakers on this. Yeah. Um, so we can continue discussing. I, just my thoughts. I um, Eric, you were nodding your head to the the film screen, so I feel like maybe you're familiar with that. Um, hopefully, is that something that you can include in your September presentation?
Absolutely, that's something we can include in it. I didn't put it on the side. It's actually one of the things I thought about while I was putting that aside a bit ago. I didn't put it on the side because it kind of wasn't a universal solution. That's a very unique situation that she's talking about with that much glass and that much window and the way it's facing, but definitely if we're going to look at classroom by classroom solutions, um, and that makes sense to me, that would be something for those uh those high level of the the rooms that have a high level of windows and that are facing the proper direction. It definitely would help with the situation. I I I definitely agree with her.
My my personal feelings on this is that there isn't going to be one uh universal solution because you know, given we have seven classrooms that are going to be torn down, so we don't want to install a portable unit, but we might want to in another situation. And so I I think it, we might need to go classroom by classroom. And and I do like the idea of um the OSHA temperature. I know it's really, I I've been in classrooms where it says it's seventy-five and it is not seventy-five. Um, and and that's been ongoing since my sixteen year old was in kindergarten. Um, and so I think I lost my train of thought. Um, that's what I was gonna say. I've I've been seeing the news reports of especially like Chicago and whatnot, sending kids home in the middle of the day because it's too hot. So I guess that's the new, I need to look into that more, like what the rules are. And um, I know they've been getting into triple digits, but um, yeah, so it's a problem. We know we've got to deal with it. So um, we do have a hand up. I don't know if we want to take another. There's not a speaker card. Yeah. Um, okay, Mercedes, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, sorry, I submitted a speaker card, but it must have been too late. Um, really quickly, I am Mercedes. I'm a parent of kids in the district. And I emailed the board and I really appreciate everyone being so responsive and really feeling the pain. Um, I know this is an issue in a lot of places. I just wanted to share our experience, but then my son, who's actually in Ms. Vance's class, wanted to share his experience. So I will hand it over to him really quick.
So we were taking our I ready tests today. It was about eighty, eighty-five maybe, and it was really, really hard to think. We have a ton of fans. People, I don't know if they got more fans, but there is more stuff in the classroom because of this problem. So, yeah.
Thanks, Ben. So anyway, we just really want to emphasize, I love the conversation about trying to find some at least temporary solutions now because Ms. Vance does have fans and you know, we don't want our teachers getting sick and our kids feeling like they can't learn. So um, just thank you for prioritizing this. I just want to make sure you're hearing the voices from the community.
That's it. Thank you so much.
No, thanks, thanks Mercedes. And I didn't catch your son's name, but thank you so much for speaking to the board. I think it's awesome when students take the opportunity to come and talk to us. Um, we really love hearing from it. That that's why we go to the school sites to get a chance to hear from you directly, but coming to the board and talking about it. Because this isn't, it is an adult issue, right? Because of course, teachers are in the classroom and and staff is in the classroom, but it's really a student issue. Um, and your ability and tying it to, you know, your academics and how the performance is, I I really appreciate you taking the time and talking to us tonight. Thanks.
Okay, so I think, yeah, thank you very much. Um, I agree with what Mike said. So it seems like there's have been kind of heads nodding. So maybe in terms of direction. Oh, oh, sorry. Go ahead, David.
David hasn't.
All right, so I'm going to start by kind of zooming out to talk about the facilities master plan, then go back in air conditioning. Cool. All right, so I had some very basic level questions for Rick here, which he responded to in great detail. I owe him a diet Mountain Dew. Um, for the next couple of months, I'm still the junior member here on the board, so I get to ask really dumb plain questions, at least for another couple of months. Um, so why do we have a facilities master plan? Why are we doing this? Well, because we have to. Once every ten years is the short answer. The last one we did was done about nine, nine and a half years ago. So whoops, it's about time, right? So, okay, that's why we're doing a facilities master plan. We we're we're required to. Um, so just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, plain language. Um, having that facilities master plan lets us set set a stack rank order of priority, uh, of priorities. So like if we have a wishlist, basically. If we had infinite money, in what order would we get what things done? And this is like really useful guidance for us not to demand infinite money because we're never going to have infinite money, but rather when we do have some money, what's the best possible way to spend it to go and further the quality of education received in this district, right? That's the goal is to get the stack ranking out. So just want to make sure everyone is really clear on that. From my perspective, I think we have about five really important priorities. There's other ones, but like there's five that really float to the top. The first one, I almost said it twice, is air conditioning. Air conditioning! Crystal clear. The community has spoken loud and clear, not just Mrs. Vance's classroom, which seems to have disproportionate representation in this district. But I've also heard from other folks around the district that's super important and we get it. You can't learn when it's too hot. We're going to get more into that in a second. Solar panels, really important. We get good ROI from this. This is actually one of these areas where we're going to invest and we're going to get our investment back, right? Not always true for a school district that we have ROI positive investments in such a tactile tactile way, but uh solar panels, we're going to get that and we're get, that's going to help uh insulate us against increases in PG and E rates. The third bit is battery backup to also further reduce uh our dependence on PG and E. So we can continue instruction in the event of grid outages. PG and E has not proven that they can always you know, operate a one hundred percent reliable power grid, especially not when it gets really hot out, right? So I think battery is going to be really important. Number four, air filters to go filter out the smoke when there's wildfires fires occasionally caused by PG and E, right? Uh, and so I think like that's really important to have a high quality, healthy classroom environment. And then finally, we've got TK, and that's just a new thing that's being handed to us. And there's some facilities improvements that we're going to be required to do in order to support TK, right? And so those are kind of the top five. There's going to be other stuff, but like I just want to make sure the community knows what I think are the top five priorities in 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 about that stack rank order. Um, by the way, PS, people forget about the charter schools. We're not going to forget about the charter schools. We're going to incorporate them into our facilities master plan. And we're going to make sure that their facilities are reasonably equivalent to the other district schools, right? Just want to make that shout out. Um, we've made it very clear that the district needs to do a better job communicating its planning and sequencing around around construction and especially around air conditioning. And we've seen the beginning of that tonight with our sequence plan. I'm not happy with everything that I've seen, but it's at least the the beginning of the communication about what's going on. Parents, if you care about facilities and things like air conditioning, we'd love to have you on board with site committee representation. There's going to be ways for you to get involved and to state whether or not you agree with some of the priorities that I just outlined right here. In terms of air conditioning, we know from the research that students do not learn well when things get too hot. Every student in the district deserves to learn in an environment that's comfortable and temperatures are rising. I personally can't think very well when temperatures get over eighty-five, so I'm in, I'm very empathetic to this. My best friend today, we have a weekly walk and talk. He sat down, he's got uh, he's got kids at one of the schools in the district here. And the seven, eight wing of one of the district schools is absolutely baking. The fans that the district provided is awesome that there were fans. So those kind of option one is already being deployed in some areas. They were, they were way too noisy and they interfered with uh instructions. So the the parents actually needed to chip in together. I only found this out a few hours ago, literally. The the parents needed to chip in to get like Dyson fans, which are quieter just so that the students could actually hear what the teachers had to say and the classroom could have some ventilation. So I thought that was sort of surprising. There were some portable AC units, but they're, um, they've not been super effective. And parents are actually on the verge of going wildcat and just like going into the classroom and starting their own construction projects to try and like keep the classroom safe for their kids, which is partly not super ideal, like the district I think could do better than just like telling parents like, good luck, have at you uh with with the classrooms, right? Um, so it's really clear this is a priority. Um, i- in terms of the timelines we're getting from PG and E and the cost estimates here, they're they're way over what it feels like acceptable to me. Like we're talking about about three hundred classrooms, fifty to sixty million dollars. They're talking like two hundred thousand dollars per classroom to install air conditioning. Maybe I'm just miscalibrated, but it feels off by an order of magnitude. That feels kind of wrong.
I think it's the roofing, the plumbing. It's like, it's more than just an HVAC unit in a classroom. Yeah.
That's fair. And so I would expect like a multiple of maybe two X, three X, but ten X. I mean, yeah, but the two, two X, three X, like I could maybe understand like a factor like that because I would have expected something like fifteen, twenty K classroom, two hundred. Yeah, two X, three X, like I could maybe understand like a factor like that because I would have expected something like fifteen, twenty K classroom, two hundred K. It's about like an order of magnitude more than I was calibrated to expect um in terms of in terms of costs here. Um, in terms of the the timing, I appreciate the honesty, but at the same time, like we got to be clear that if it's going to be four or five years until some of these classrooms are going to credibly get AC on the express top prioritization plan, like we have to have interim solutions. Doing nothing is not really an option. I think installing just like the the fans as a solution is probably not a not a sufficient solution either. So we're going to need to get creative. We're going to need to look at other things. This is a relatively low humidity environment. We sit in the rain shadow of the Santa Cruz mountain ridge. It's why we have climate best by government test. Low humidity means that swamp coolers become an option, something that we do need to look at. In terms of heat rejection, right, there's a bunch of different options for window treatments, shades, reflectors. There's even other things like painting the blacktops white uh to reduce the heat islanding effects, right? We should bring in people who know about this stuff. I'm not an expert in this stuff. You shouldn't be looking to me to give answers. But but I think heat rejection, preventing the heat energy from entering into the classroom in the first place makes it much easier to get that heat energy out of the classroom, right? And some of those things we can deploy very, very quickly and we should get aggressive about deploying those things fast. I I I I think that it's really clear that uh students can't learn well when it's hot. We're getting more hot days per year and that this is a priority. The taxpayers have given us a mandate to go and improve the quality of the facilities with Measure S. Thank you, taxpayers. And we we owe it to them to give them great facilities for education. That includes making sure that we have air conditioning in every classroom and cooling appropriate for every student as as fast as we can get it in there. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to say, just to add some historical perspective, um, because I was here for the last uh facilities master plan and the last bond when we started the whole process. And, you know, the community outreach and the facilities master plan is very similar to what we did before. What's interesting to me is that ten years ago, nobody brought up air conditioning or cooling, right?
I didn't.
You did? Okay, I shouldn't say nobody, but it wasn't like the drug. What what's interesting to me, no, and you know, my kids went into classrooms. I remember some of them being really hot for back to school night and open house nights. Um, but there were like a few days out of the year, right? I mean, the point is, yeah, maybe there was a few people that complained, but it's just radically different. And I mean, I think, you know, you expressed that well, and so did I earlier. So I guess just all the parents and teachers and everybody is is we hear you. We want to do something. I think the reality is though, if you look at how long it just takes to implement anything at a school, it just takes longer than it does for an individual if it was your own house or your own building or whatever, because we have all these extra approvals and just everything we have to do. So so you're right, we're going to need some interim solutions is the bottom line, right? So anyway, I just, I was just thinking that it's just really interesting that now this is the top priority. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is I agreed with your list of priorities. The other thing I would add is that, you know, at specific school sites, we're certainly going to have classrooms that need to be torn down. They're really old. They were on that list before, but we just didn't have enough money to do them. I know I've talked to a number of, as an example, a number of Hoover teachers where those classrooms are really old and just need full on upgrades. I know that the the um, the middle school building at North Star is another one of them. So those are just a couple of examples.
Kennedy is another one.
Kennedy is another one. So the point is, in addition to these, what's going to happen is with the stack ranking, we're going to see all this other stuff come up. And decisions will have to be made. And at the end of the day, you just can't do everything you want to do, which is what happened with Measure T. We do have more money with Measure S, which is great. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to add that, that I agree with your priority list. And then in addition to that, there'll be these other things. And then I do know that, uh, you know, we definitely talked about our whole nutritional system and particularly going with our self op. What are the things we either need to do at our individual school sites and those kitchens? Or do we want to have a central kitchen? You know, that I think those questions are still out there, but we'll want to make sure those get explored. So there's a few things like that that important, but but it'll be interesting. I mean, when you start to stack rank, then you really have to make the hard decisions, right? With that said, we know cooling is number one.
Yeah, I think that climate ready schools was kind of always a top priority for the new, the new bond measure. Um, and I'm glad to see that we're discussing it. That's at the top of the list here to pull that stuff together. That includes air conditioning is one of the solutions, but heat reduction.
Yeah.
Um, you know, being ready for air quality days, poor air quality days, um, less resilience on the grid uh for for those kind of interruptions, trying to figure that out. All those kinds of solutions are in there. Um, I think that's definitely a big priority. Um, I do want to say for the facilities master plan, while you know, it may be a requirement and have to put that together. It's for me, the thing that is so valuable as a community, it gives a structure for getting community input. That's critical. Um, I remember going through it when, gosh, my kids were like in second grade, maybe first grade. Um, and it was really neat, like you're at the school site thinking about like what what are the improvements that can be there as as a member of that community? Um, and I think that's really important, the flow diagram of all the different inputs and how the sources come together and get mixed back up. Um, I think kind of explains the value of it. So I'm I'm really looking forward to that. And the output is not a precise plan of what's going to happen, but it's a strategic plan for direction. So I think even the output is good in addition to the input. Um, the other thing too is that uh as as always said in all of these presentations, probably more need is going to be identified across all the sites than we'll actually be able to fund and and do that. So I do want to, I I do think that we will be looking at it. I don't know for sure because we haven't identified what the projects were. But I can tell from the decisions that were made prior to me being on the board for Measure T, when you're looking across all the sites, it may be difficult to say, I'm going to do everything at every site, right? There may not be funding for it. So I think that holding a bar that says we're going to do everything for every site and make them all at exactly at the same might be a tough bar. We may look at things and decide that that's not the prioritization that we want to have. So I think that we just need to remember that we should have a, we're going to need to have a prioritization framework. We probably won't be able to do every single project that gets identified um as much as we'd like to uh and put that in. But uh, yeah, and again, you know, to reiterate, we we do need to find some quick solutions. Um, these are, we know this is going to be years to get HVAC everywhere. Um, we do need to find some quick solutions, especially for um, the most extreme cases uh in the classrooms at the schools.
So do you have anything else you want to add?
I think they've pretty much summed everything up. Um, I do um definitely think um, solutions need to happen before the big implementation because it does get really hot. I haven't gone to visit the sites when it's extremely hot, but I know even at Sequoia High School, their classrooms are super hot. And so I know what it feels like. Um, obviously for the teacher to be there, the students are there just maybe for a period, but the teacher is there all day. You know, so definitely we need to do something about it. So, thank you.
And can I just say a quiet part out loud that especially for some of the older buildings that we may be tearing down anyhow, I'm personally okay if this interim solutions are ugly, right? If they are effective in reducing the temperature of the classrooms, like I'm okay compromising on aesthetic. Just going to put that out there.
So I don't know if we need to give direction because we're having a meeting, a presentation in September where I think we'll get more direction, but.
Yeah. Maybe those thermometers in the classroom and then also um. Eric, what would it take to um, as Stephanie pointed out with that piece that she brought forward with the filming of the windows or whatever that's that's called? What would it take to just, I would like if we could get that done and then we can all go visit it? To see what's happening, you know, take the temperature in the room and see, is it changing? Is it not? Is it the same?
Yeah, if 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 that's a, if that's a room that we want to um, want to experiment, and that's that's a good term. Experiment on and and do a before and after temperature reading, why not? I would say, I mean, that that's um, that's a weeks uh weeks, a weeks uh thing versus a month's thing. So.
Well. Let's do it.
I think we can pilot that and maybe you can, it will be part of your information that you bring in September, hopefully.
Sounds good.
Right. Do we have any data about like fans about, yeah, and because I know the district already went through some bit to like get lots of fans. But if they're too loud for them to be effective in being used during instruction, are there things that we can do right now? Because if if we take too long to go reason about this, we're going to end up in fall and no, no, it's not a problem anymore, right? So like the urgency is like, what can we do in the next couple of weeks, maybe even before we're we're meeting again? What, that's one set of options.
That's that's one option. I mean, that's a pilot for it. But the other piece is let me, and all the principals are on here, if you know.
I have principals.
They're they're here. And then um, let me get in contact with them so they can give me what is happening at their school sites regarding the heat. I know a lot of Kennedy teachers are on here because they sent me an email late this afternoon. I didn't get to get back to them, but I'm glad that they're on here.
And the whole fans being too loud for them to be usable and effective, I only learned in the last twenty-four hours. So it's like, yeah, I'm I'm just wondering like.
Did buy a lot of fans.
Yeah, right, because we bought lots of fans, but it's really disappointing. It's like they're they're big and they're noisy and now we can't really use them.
They're kind of like the ones you showed me on. Never mind, we won't go there. Um, but we'll we'll look into that. So the principals are all here right now and I'll get information from them.
Should we, should we do an experiment with like a swamp cooler? Because like those are relatively inexpensive. And again, that is a low humidity environment, so it feels like that could be effective in.
How loud are they? Because I was at Adelante Selby last week on Friday and I was with the uh Unidos group and we were talking about this and.
They are a little bit louder.
That's what the parents said.
Um, they also hang out your window, so you've got some concerns about not being able to close the window. Also, they're pretty big uh from a maintenance standpoint because they have so much water in them. You have to clean them a lot so they don't get moldy and so you don't have that issue with them. So they are, that would be a heavy load for the maintenance team, but I'm I'm just just giving you info.
It's fair, but it's like, again, if this is only like for a couple of years, that is like, great, okay. Yes, please, please. Comes up, comes down, what?
Hello. Okay, so um, in, I believe it's twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, a portable air conditioner was put into my room. Um, it does get maintenance regularly. However, it does not spread the cool air all the way through. I'm going to speak to those fans. I used to have two fans in front of it just to help get that air to circulate. So it's effective in one small corner of the room. It really does not pull the air all the way around the room.
That's for a portable air conditioner.
That's a portable.
Right. And I'm just wondering like if we have some options around swamp coolers separately from portable air conditioners.
I had a swamp cooler at home and that was my exact experience experience. Um, and it, I mean, it only covered like a small little living space. Um, and we had to use the fans on top of the swamp cooler, which then we had to clean because it was.
Yes, and loud. So one of the things I'm just want, I know I'm over my time, but um, prior to us getting the Red Cat system across the district, I actually purchased a portable microphone system that I used to use because I had to project over all of those loud fans.
Yeah.
When Kyle Bra-Bra Broom used to be here, he came in my room and he saw me struggling with it. He goes, well, that's a great idea. We should have the Red Cat system across the whole district because you're trying to amplify over all of these fans. So I could show you, I brought them all. If you want to see all the different fans that I have, they're in my car. If you would like a visual and how to hear how loud they are, I brought them today. So just, you know, if you wanted to, but I I appreciate that I have that. But the fans, it doesn't, it doesn't circulate enough. So. Off.
So we will move forward with the pilot. That's number one. Number two, I will ask the principals about, once we get the thermometers to put them in the classrooms and let's start monitoring. And then maybe the principals and some of the teachers that are online right now can realize how hot their rooms are. We'll start out with the pilot with Stephanie's. And then if that works, then maybe we start moving in another direction.
Can I make it even more specific than that? By the next board meeting that we have on Wednesday, September eleventh, if we could have a short term plan for like, what are we going to do for cooling in place? Like we should be, have been able to run the pilot, right? Get that installed, see the temperatures drop. I'm just, I'm trying to inject a sense of urgency here as we take too long, we're going to be in default.
Eric, I'm going to ask Eric. Eric, how long will it take to that on her classroom? And that'll give us enough.
That'll give us some info on on what we can do.
Okay.
I can't come here and promise that we'll have a solution for every single individual.
No, I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking for the information, the data that's needed to see if that's something really relevant for us to go forward with.
And then ideally, a rough sense of like, what can we pull the lever on that we could make forward progress by the end of September, right? Okay, thank you.
I would like, and I don't, I I don't know how much time I'm asking of staff for this. But if we are going to get those thermometers, I would like to see the data. Um, if that means a principal goes through and spot checks at a certain time of day, like, you know, one o'clock in the afternoon or something on a couple of the hottest classrooms, just so we can actually physically see the temperatures in each of the classrooms. So we have some idea of what that looks like.
Yeah, we could do that. We could get that info. How? So Rick, we need to get together tomorrow, see about the ordering and all that of us. Send me a picture of that.
Okay. Anything else on this?
I think I know what we need. Thank you. And thank all the members who were, came forward tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate all the emails and this. Um, you know, there's a bunch of people online that were concerned about this issue too.
You know, um, the only other thing I'll mention that we didn't really talk about, Mike, you kind of mentioned it was in addition to kind of cooling the classroom, it's also just sort of um, any of the heat reduction sorts of things that we could do. You know, some of the things that have come up um is the whole cooling of the grounds of our school sites as well, just providing more trees and greenery and um, you know, we have a lot of asphalt at some of those sites. And then, of course, some of our sites are also surrounded by really a lot of asphalt and hot zones. So I would like for us to think about, this is kind of part of the more longer term, but as we think about the landscaping and everything. Um, and I know that there's some school sites that really still want some gardens, which could be a part of it. And some of those I've said, well, we we need to sort of get through the facilities master plan, but hopefully that can be a part of it as well. So it kind of goes with um, heat reduction sorts of opportunities.
I know we've, we've worked with City Trees and they have planted a lot of trees on our, on our campuses, but they're still small.
Right, and they're going to do, and they're going to do.
And this can include interventions that like take black surfaces and painting them white, right? It's very effective in heat rejection, right? So I think e- exploring efficient, rapid approaches to heat rejection could be, could be really effective.
And those would be lessons.
Yeah.
All right. I'm going to move us on to uh eight point one, discussion of school assignments and committee assignments for board members. So we have, yeah, we have our twenty-three, twenty-four assignments as a reference. Um, you know, both, okay. So I think this looks like what we do every year where we just shift.
Yeah.
Um, as far as the committee assignments, I I I, my personal recommendation is just to leave them as they are because there are going to be changes come the end of this year.
Yeah.
Um, and why shift everything around when it's going to get shifted around again in December?
Can I just confess something? I feel like I did a kind of mediocre job in terms of like being the personal representative of these schools, especially to the board. Um, so is this something that we'd like to get better at, like to have it mean more that we're assigned to a school? Because I just want to, I just want to call it out. Like I don't think I did a great job on that. Maybe you all did like a champ job on representing your your assignments, but I feel like I kind of got like a C minus on mine.
So Dr. Bev, or you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that this is in place um, so that if we moved into the bi trusty area elections, we still thought of the district as ours and not just my schools in my trusty area are mine and I don't care about anybody else.
That's true. That's true. But are you asking what you should be doing when you're visiting schools? Are you asking how many times should I visit per school year?
That that kind of guidance would be great because like I I look back on the last year where putatively I've been assigned to Clifford Connect and North Star. Have I had engagements with those schools? Yeah. Have I had more engagements with those schools and those properties than other schools that are on the list here? Not really, right? And so like if if there's an expectation around like, you know, monthly sync with the principal, quarterly tour of the school grounds, things like that, where we could be more effective advocates for the students at the that school site, for the staff at that school site. I'd I'd love the guidance because I don't want to be, I don't want to be incompetent at at doing my role of representing these schools if I'm assigned to these schools.
So previous board members, and I'll let Janet and Alyssa speak for themselves. Um, there was one board member that used to go to all the schools all the time. There was one board member that used to go to all the schools all the time. Would make it, the, the board member was retired, of course. Did not have full-time position, although they do have a position during tax time and so forth. But this board member and a couple others would do the same thing prior to Janet and Elisa being on the board, where they would throughout each month, not only make sure they hit their schools, but start going to all the other schools, meeting with the principals, visiting the classrooms. Another thing that board members, board members have done is go to the special events. Maybe I can't get there because I'm working during the day, so there's something going on in the evening, there's something going on in the weekend, whatever, I'll hit that instead. So it depends too on the amount of time you have. You know, and we're going to talk a bit about that tonight as we go through this appointee piece where, you know, it's a good chance another person will come on the board that is working full time. So, you know, this job is very important and it's very time consuming. But as the administrators know, and I know, there are many times you cannot be there for different functions. If you're coming in, maybe, you know, at least, I would say your, your schools that you're assigned to, that you're there, that you're at least there a couple of times a year. And then the others, visit, visit and show up.
I'll add too, I think when it was an at-large election, parents and staff get anxious emailing the entire board and I often hear like, oh, I don't want to do that. But having an, an assignment gave them somebody that they felt comfortable reaching out to directly.
These are, these are on the website, right? So people can see it. That's what I was going to say. So the flip side of that is then people may contact you specifically about North Star as an example last year, right? So I think you're probably doing fine. I mean, I mean, I think my, my philosophy has been around this, but I think there's also an opportunity as you bring on two new board members, I would imagine in January or February, you're going to have some kind of a retreat and regroup with the handbook and expectations and cultural norms and all that. I mean, the cultural norms of, of our school district has been for a long while, in part because we were at large for a long time, but that we would visit every site, right? And pay attention to every site. But that year, these would be our special ones, just that you might, as, as Dr. Baker said, maybe you, you know, you go out there one extra time or, or you're just there as, as a sounding board if they need somebody to talk to. But I do think it's even more important as we go to trustee areas to continue that. So there's again, this cultural, yeah, I, yeah, so I, yeah, so I don't think, I don't think there's an expectation that you're doing so much more and reporting back or anything like that, unless you, you know, you had to be visiting a site and you saw something and felt like it was important to let us know, so.
So I, I wanted to say that I'm kind of in the same page as you. It's really hard working full time to try to make it to a couple of days. I mean, I barely made it to like once a year, right? So I think and I hope that principals and parents and students do feel that the decisions we make as a board actually affects district-wide and that we do care about all schools and not just the schools that are assigned to us. So I think if you just keep that in mind and just pat yourself on the back every time you make a decision based on, you know, the wellness of district-wide, that should give you some better feelings.
And then regarding the committee assignments, everybody I assume is fine just leaving them as is. I do, for the, the trustees that are remaining on for the next four years, just there's going to be a number of committee assignments that Elisa and I are on together that are going to need to be built. So just be thinking about that this fall and what you might be willing to take on and provide leadership for with two, two new board members coming along.
And then also what, what you might be willing to give up if there's a board member who really wants to take on that particular committee, right? Yeah. And of course, we're still going to be living in the community, so you can always contact us anytime you have a question.
I'll still be a parent in the district. Not dead yet. Okay, let's move on to the discussion at hand, the process of appointment for trustee area three.
Wendy, if you don't find me great, I think I'm going to get up and stand. All right. So this evening, what I wanted to go through with you is a process of appointing a new trustee. And we can go to the first slide, Wendy. Let's go perfect the background. And I know years ago, we went through somewhat of a similar process and Elisa was here at the time. But that was due to not an appointment because of an election, but it was because someone was leaving. So right now, we're fine with Mike, who is definitely Mr. Wells, Trustee Wells, Vice President Wells, is, is definitely going to be returning. He filled out the paperwork and so forth and no, thank God, no one is running after, with him. So we just, we have got Mike. That, that's great. As a superintendent, you know, board members are really important. We had area four with, not area four, but area one, who was Elisa's area. And we didn't have someone filling out any paperwork until the very last minute. And there was extra time given because we had incumbents that were could run again, but they give you until, instead of it being, you know, that previous Friday of in, see the date up here was the fourteenth of, of August, but the Friday prior to that was if you were an incumbent board member, you had actually until the fourteenth at five o'clock to apply. But we did have someone that did apply and that will be Ms. King for area one. So that's two board members we have to fill our four, five, I mean. But we didn't get anybody for Janet's area, area three. And the process was that there were recommendations given to myself and to board members from principals, from other members that were on-site council at school sites, from other members in the community. And Jorge was gracious enough to put it in a format for us. So it told us what areas these people, these candidate, possible candidates were in. And so we started calling them. I would be at certain site council meetings and asking them or meetings that I was at where I knew these people were also going to be attending. And I know both Elisa and Janet did the same thing. We got no takers. And so what has become evident now is that the board needs to appoint a board member for area three. And let's go on to that next, next page. So when we're looking at, at the background for this, we're looking at the ed code, of course, which we need to follow. The board is responsible for making these appointments, so you will all be partaking in the interview process. You'll all be discussing during that process when it's over, the manner in which you would like to go next and how we would vote, how you would vote for another colleague on the board. And when this person is selected, it is for four years. It's not for provisional, which a provisional indicates that that is for someone who is stepping down from their position for a personal reason or whatever. So we will go through this process. And I will get into that in a few moments. Next slide. So there's an applicant eligibility and this is put into place not only by ed code, but also it is supported by the California School Boards Association. So every applicant must be at least eighteen years old. You need to be a, you need to be a citizen and register to vote. You cannot be a Redwood City School District employee and serve on the board. And you must complete the application process. And you have to be a resident in area three. And area three encompasses the school sites that you see on the next slide here, which talk about Adelante Selby. You've got portions of Henry Ford, Kennedy Middle School, and then portions of Garfield, Hoover and Roosevelt. And David, you had a question about if you could, I'm sorry, if you, if you could get on and put in your address, yes, it will tell you. If you get to our, go to our website where the terrier, where the territory areas are, you can do that. It's an interactive website. So.
It's the website printed at the bottom of the screen too.
Yeah. So that's the next, the duties. So some of the duties and, and it's going to be very important when people decide that maybe they want to be a trustee and they want to apply for the position. One of the things that I want to say is besides what's on the screen, that it's very important that they actually have conversations with you individually or by two. You can really give them information regarding the duties that you have all taken part in. There is definitely setting polys, policies. You're overseeing the budget, you're overseeing reductions of the budget. You, we just talked about the facilities master plan, you're going to oversee that. You're developing long-term plans when it comes to the LCAP and to strategic goals. And you also developed a mission, a vision and values. You were all part of that and brought that forward. Next slide. So there are professional study sessions also that do exist. And CSBA puts on many, many different types of sessions. And the Samatayo County School Boards Association is very much in the forward process of making sure that they give their board members that are in this county, different types of opportunities to come together, different types of workshops where not only board members go, but superintendents also attend. And of course, there is the large conference that happens every year. And I believe this year it is in Anaheim, right, Elisa? And, and then other special events that happen at the school sites. There's graduations, there's promotion ceremonies, there's different types of ceremonies that are taking place throughout the schools, whether you go to a cafecito, whether you're at a PTA, PTO meeting, whether you're at a school site council meeting and want to partake. Those are all some of the duties that a board member may want to take into consideration. Next slide. So here's the, here's the application process. So beginning August thirtieth, Jorge is going to put online that we are open for applicants for area three. And we would like to close the application process on September thirtieth at five o'clock. The other item is that the public board interview. In ed code, the interviews must be done in open session. There are no closed sessions when it comes to doing the interviews. They are just like a regular board meeting, so they will be videoed and will also be in person. We are hoping that, I'm asking you to select one of these dates. Now, October sixteenth would need to be a special meeting, but we can start on October ninth. We could do October ninth. And what I want to really make clear is that we depending on the number of candidates, we should do them all in one evening and not split them up. The ed code says you can, but I would prefer and recommend that we don't, that we do it all in one night. And as Elisa and I were trying to remember, we thought it was four candidates.
I, I think it was more like we started with six and then one dropped out and there was about five, but yeah. But you know, that, that's when we were at, I was thinking more about that. We were at large at that point. So you had the whole school district to draw from. I think going to trustee areas, there's just fewer people in each of the zones, right, who are interested and qualified and all of that. So I mean, I would be thrilled if we had two or three applicants, right? So you've got a choice. And if we have one really great applicant, that would also be good.
Exactly. So if you're okay with the ninth, it's a regular board meeting, it's already scheduled. Thumbs up.
Do we, do we have, what else is on the agenda for the ninth? Evelyn?
Yeah, you know, that's what we talked about. I, I thought you had a presentation.
That's true. It can start at six. We just need to notify everyone.
But did, were we already planning on a full docket?
Sorry, a mental health report on that date, but I don't see anything else listed under the schedule board agenda items. So it might just be regular business contracts, stuff like that.
The only other item that we had on that ninth, we were starting with our board reports, so I'm going to have to back that up.
Let's clear the docket just in case there's a bunch of applicants.
Yeah, so we are going to, that would basically be the meeting with the exception of maybe some consent items. That would be it.
Yeah, I think if we can keep the agenda later on the ninth, so that that can be the only item other than consent, that would be good. And depending on how many we have, possibly consider starting at six.
Do we have like a rough sense of like half an hour per candidate? So if like, I'm making things up, if there's more than four candidates, we decide to start at six. If there's four candidates or fewer, we start at seven? I'm making that up.
I don't have an answer to that.
So the, the recommendation, and there was a recommendation not only by, put out by CSBA, but also DWK gave some information and one of my colleagues in Las Lomitas, Beth, because Beth has done this several times. She says it's best to, your, your interview, depending on the number. She said if you had four, I would do thirty minutes per interview. If you had more than that, twenty, but no less than that, she said, because you want to be able to ask your own questions if you so desire.
And, and I would recommend, I mean, when we did this before, you know, we, we had the applications from everybody, we knew who they were and we could contact them individually or two, two of you at a time could do it if you wanted to, to prevent the Brown Act. But that's certainly, I mean, because you're not really going to get to, if you don't know them, right, you're not going to get to know them in twenty minutes. You know this, so. So maybe for those that either you don't know, that you want to get to know, you can reach out and.
To, to, as people apply, do we find out, do, are we notified that somebody has applied?
Let's go to the minutes.
Sorry.
So let me just finish with the process and I'll get into that nitty gritty. So but we must, these vacancies must be in the news media. That's our little, we're going to put it in the daily review, so we're going to pay for an ad for that. And then we're going to put it on, on all our social media. And then, as I said previously, the applicants will be interviewed in open session. Oh, that's all right. The, the, the piece that I wanted to, to emphasize was also as the applicants come through, we are going to notify you. And before that, what I wanted to say also is I would like a subgroup of two of you, because there are already questions made available to us from CSBA. The subgroup would look at those questions and determine, do they fit, do they not fit? Pull them out, put some others in, and how many questions are we going to have depending on the number of candidates? But as each application comes in, I will make sure that you each get a copy of the application. And the subgroup will work with me on, on the questions. And then I was also given a rubric by Beth, that they created a rubric for their candidates. It's something that we can look at. Once we look at it, send it out to everybody, get all your, your yays, your nays, and get it back to me individually. So we won't be, so we will be adhering to the Brown Act and not breaking it. Just get it to me individually. I think the process is very clear. I, I believe that the board president. I I believe that the board president will be able to move it forward. The item that I questioned with our attorney was just to make sure that that this was not provisional, it is not provisional, that it definitely is a four-year term. The provisional would have the amount of years that are less than a regular term. So that that's the provisional piece. And the other piece was if we needed to have a special meeting, she said, yes, you could call a special meeting. But basically, I think it's quite direct and really pretty easy to run, to really run. And and it's the board president that runs it.
I think it's pretty straightforward. So I know you want a subcommittee to go through.
Yes, please.
The interview structure. Is that, I guess, is there somebody who is particularly interested in that? Feels like they have time for it.
It's probably going to be one meeting to develop the questions. The other, and within that meeting, also the rubric. And then to get those questions and the rubrics out to the rest of you, so that you can give feedback.
I'm a glutton for punishment.
You want to do it, Cecilia?
Cecilia and David. Okay, perfect. Perfect.
Can I ask one question before we go on? The for the questions, as you're as you're looking through it, I know a lot of the suggested ones were around, you know, where does your kid go to school? But I would suggest that we open those questions up a little bit more, so it doesn't feel like it, you have to have a kid in school. Because there might be people who act onto school, yeah, things like that. So asking how they're connected to Redwood City, this school district feels a lot more appropriate than that.
AMAS.
And the other one I wanted to just ask was like, for the outreach, do you want to explicitly reach out to, you know, district organizations? Either district committees like DLAC and Superintendent's Advisory Committee and site ones like ELAC and school site councils?
Sure, we can do that. Definitely. We already, we did reach out to the Superintendent's Advisory. We did that one.
Yeah.
Right. And then certainly all the principals.
Yeah.
I mean, you already mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah, because I I imagine when this comes back with applicants and we're talking through it, it would be kind of nice to hear a little bit about how the process ran and have a little bit of a report there, what the outreach was, you know, how many people expressed interest, something like that. Just so we can also learn, like, if we ever have to do this again, was was the process that we followed effective? I thought back to, I looked back to when the city council had to replace an interim appointment. And that's kind of how their memo was set up for their their day of interviews was, here's all the outreach we did, you know, here's what the law says we have to do. Here's why we're choosing to go this path as opposed to doing an election. I thought it was a pretty helpful document to like, sort of remind everybody, like, ground them in, like, what did it happen there, just before they even do the interviews.
And just a reminder, when you're talking about all the principals, all the DLAC, I mean, it's not going to apply to every school because of the trustee area.
Right.
Although they are schools of choice, and technically someone could have trained that, yeah.
Yep. And the other thing is that because this was for an election and it was not provisional, you know, the the rules are a little different, they're not really different, but but they're, as you said previously, they it's open to all members in the Redwood City area, as long as you're in Area Three. And that's the piece that I think that people really truly need to understand. We had a couple people that did contact me that I contacted contacted them first because a principal gave me their name. And they said, sure. And then I looked and like you said, school of choice. Yeah, they did not live in that area.
So as a subcommittee, I think you guys need to make sure that you're checking if they're in that trustee area, so that we don't bring them in for an interview and find out they don't.
Eligible candidates.
And then I wanted to say on the interview questions, I did, I had one specific one that I wanted to include. So I gave that to Dr. Baker also. So maybe if there are other suggestions he can bring to the subcommittee, let him know.
All right. Any any other questions?
Well, the the and ultimately, the draft interview questions that you come up, whatever your committee comes up with, will be shared with all of us so we can have input right before it actually happens.
Right. The draft is going to go out to all of you regarding the questions and regarding the rubric.
Right. And then we just get back to you directly. Yeah. Okay.
So I just want to take a moment to address the public and people watching this, listening to this, that are maybe on the fence about whether or not to to apply. So I'm I'm talking to you, dear person. I want to emphasize what was mentioned earlier, that you do not need to have your kid in the district. You do not need to have a formal connection with the district. You do need to live in the correct area, and there is, I just learned about it tonight, Cool Widget on the website where you can punch in your address and it'll tell you what area you 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 live in, and you do need to live in Area Three. You do not need to run a campaign, you don't need to raise funds, you do not need to put out lawn signs, you do not need to bang on doors. You need to submit a written application. You'll have a month-long window to do that, that Dr. Baker just outlined. And there'll be one live interview that you need to show up to here, okay? You and your children won't get any special treatment if you do have kids in the district, so don't don't sign up for the wrong reasons. Reach out to me or any of the other board members. If you want to learn more about what it's like to serve on a school board, it's a totally new experience for me. I'm about a year and a half, two years into my journey here. Would love to talk to you. I'm sure any of the other board members would also like to talk to you. So if you're thinking about it, you're wondering, what is it really like? We're happy to sit down with you and chat one-on-one. The required baselines, you got to make board meetings. There's two board meetings that happen a month, generally Wednesday night, 7:00 PM. This is one of them. There's some other things that are really nice, but like the core of the job, just to be clear, is to actually attend board meetings. And you got to go read through the materials before the meeting. Evelyn sends them out on Friday nights. Generally, they want to hear a response by some time on Monday. If you've got some substantive commentary, you want to go and you've got core questions, you want to go and ask staff members. You are not required to work weekends. I had a number of people worried about this, like, I'm not sure that I'm willing to give up all of my weekends to go and be a board member. You can have your weekends. It's okay if you haven't held office before. You can have a meaningful home life, be an involved parent, and a full-time job, and serve on the school district. So I want to make sure that you that that you're aware of all those things. So thank you for your time and attention. Just wanted to clarify that for you, dear applicant. Looking forward to talking to you.
Thanks, Stephen.
And it's it's a good idea for the applicant to talk to the board members because you are going to tell them what it's like. Yeah, exactly. Just before I, I just wanted to say to the principals and assistant principals and other district admin that are on here, I know I asked you to be here tonight, number one, because of the bond information that was going to be moving forward. And then also because of this presentation regarding the board appointees. So I know school starts in a few hours, so feel free to leave the meeting. You don't have to stick around any of those. But I I asked them for two reasons to come here tonight, so. And as I have told them, I will not ask them to come to board meetings unless I really feel that they need to be here for something. So good night, if you'd like to leave.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here, principals.
Yeah, and I might just add, because I do know that there's some people who may be potentially interested in the board position who are listening tonight, or maybe might watch the video later. So in addition to to David, everything you said was awesome. I just wanted to say, having served 17 years, this is by far the best job that I've ever had. Certainly the most impactful, the most important. If you care about kids, if you care about your community, then, and you live in District Three, trustee Area Three, and are a registered voter and a US citizen, really think about it, because it's beyond a fundraiser at your school site. It's beyond helping one kid in one classroom. It's actually helping all of our students, all of our families, all of our staff and teachers and everything. And truly, I've had a lot of jobs over my years. And yeah, this is the hardest one, but it's also been the most rewarding one. So I really recommend anybody who's thinking about this to really think about it. I know that any other school board members would be happy to talk to you and have you join the team.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on and open a public hearing of sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2425 school year.
Yes, this is something we do every school year, and it's part of the Williams Act. So if, do you have any questions in regard to this information that was sent out to you? Anyone else? Comments?
I did, yeah.
All right, since you have no comment, then we can close it.
All right, that brings us to, you know, 10 our consent items.
I'll move to approve the consent items.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, 11.1 adoption of resolution number two, sufficiency of instructional materials for the 2425 school year.
Yes, yes.
Again, this is something that's done every year. I need any questions regarding the resolution?
Look straight forward, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
11.2 adoption of resolution number three, approval of certificates, staff gaining tenured status.
Yes, here we go.
Yeah, I'd like to celebrate this moment here for all of our teachers who are earning their tenure by ed code. It is after two years of a successful experience with satisfactory evaluations and so forth and feedback. So we are very happy for all of you. It is such a testament to the hard work and dedication you put in through induction. And if you are already a seasoned teacher, really adapting and embracing the mission and vision of the Redwood City School District and really diving into what our goals are for student success and utilizing all the strategies and all the components that we have given you professional development on. So thank you for the time and energy that you've put forth, and we're super happy for you. Each site is going to be celebrating individually, certificates are going out. Actually, they're going in the pony tomorrow because we wanted to see, ensure the board approval. But anyway, it's it's really a special night, and we hope you celebrate with your closest colleagues at your school sites. And principals will be delivering these at an upcoming appropriate staff meeting. So thank you to our teachers.
And something similar for the district office, because there's plenty of reps there.
District office, folks, as well, we have our own ceremony here, too.
Any comments?
Just say congrats to all those who are getting tenure. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations to those newly tenured. 11.1 first reading and approval of board bylaw 9223, filling vacancies.
So this board bylaw is coming to you tonight in a timely fashion as a first read, as a draft. So thank you for taking the time in advance, certainly, to go through this. And of course, given Dr. Baker's presentation, I wanted to open it up for discussion, knowing that with edits and and drafts and another meeting that will come up with the Board Policy Committee, that we will fine tune this for a second read for assumingly the next board meeting.
Just a comment as a policy committee, I noticed that this had last been reviewed and approved in 2009. And so it did not reflect our move to by trustee area. So we definitely needed to add that information in. And then just a comment for the other board members. If you look, it's on page one at the bottom, you start getting a lot, after number six, a lot of things crossed out. Really, that's because they added a number six, and so a lot of that is getting moved to a new number seven, a new number eight. So.
So it's not as many changes.
Yeah.
Mike, you had, I think you had a question.
Yeah, I had asked about, in those numbering, one line had gotten removed. I see it added back in, it's highlighted in yellow.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for adding that in. What exactly does it mean? I didn't totally understand what it what it was saying there, but.
Well, that's probably why CSBA had removed it.
Well, no, but it's back. So the decision of a competent tribunal declare, is this?
Number, number, now number 12.
Oh, the number 12, okay, sorry.
The only reason that I flagged it up is that we had got this nice building aboard vacancy that Dr. Baker had sent us. And that had the recommended policy in it as well. So I could just kind of look through that, and that's still in their recommended policy. So that was the only reason that I flagged it, like, oh, this had gotten crossed off, but it was still in the, you know, the recommended policy. I I don't know what it what it's doing, but that's basically the reason that I asked it.
So it's the number 12, then?
Yeah, the number 12, the title is 11.
What is a supplemental bond?
It was number 11, yeah, I don't know.
I believe it's another word for oath. But I want to check that. It's referenced as an oath in another section in that same government code. But I can come back with a better, more clear definition after some research. I'll double check that, what that term is, because it's referenced in other ways like an oath, but I can't be 100% certain on that.
So so it's interesting, because in the in the actual code, you know, they do talk about an additional or supplemental bond. But yeah, I don't know exactly what that is either, so we probably should get clarity and either use, I mean, use that language if legally that's the language we have to use, but maybe have an explanation of what it is, or change it to. It's very odd.
Does not, the fact that we're all reasonably well-versed in this stuff and none of us really understand it, mean that this was not written in plain English, if you plainly understood.
Yeah, it looks like it was lifted from the government code.
California government code, it was, yeah. So you look at the list.
Right.
Section 1770, subsection K.
Right.
Right, but David, if you look at subsection I, it says his or her refusal or neglect to file his or her required oath or bond. So I I could still go back and check that, because I don't want to assume it, but it that's probably likely what it is, but I'll check.
I think where we can, where we must copy paste, I suppose we must, where we can elect to use plain English, we really ought to make the best effort to do so.
You agree. Yeah. Any other thoughts or questions?
I had emailed a couple comments to Wendy and John in advance. I think probably one of the the big things for me was just ed code 5328 and the handy attachment that Mike just held up, made it really clear, as did Dr. Baker in the oral presentation today, that in the case of a failure to elect, the person appointed is not provisional, but serves their full four-year term. And I I felt that 9223 as written did not make that abundantly clear. It could be ambiguously read as written, so I just wanted to make sure that the version we adopt has that degree of clarity.
Well, to that point, I think the on page four eligibility for appointment is what Dr. Baker was reviewing, but then there's a long section on provisional appointment, which is actually not what is intending for this next session, but is still in the board bylaw, but a lot of detail in that.
And that section is followed by appointment due to failure to elect.
You look at the indenting, the appointment due to a failure to elect is a subsection of provisional appointments, which is misleading, because appointment due to a failure to elect is not a provisional appointment. It's indented.
I might not see what you're seeing.
Oh, we can just bump that over.
Yeah, I I think this might be a thing where literally indenting it, like, half an inch to the left would resolve my complaint.
The line, Wendy, that says appointment due to failure to elect, just move it over.
Make it clear it's a separate section, and that this is not a provisional appointment.
So it's not like under number four, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, sure, I can do that.
Yeah. Will that satisfy?
Sure.
I I feel like that makes it clear that we've ended talking about provisional appointments and are now talking about a non-provisional appointment.
I love those kind of fixes.
That's that's amazing. Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Wendy. Great. We are on reports from board members and superintendent. I'll report out first, I have nothing to report.
I attended the Welcome Back event. Yeah, you did. So it was great to see everyone. My my favorite, two favorite parts, I really enjoyed the keynote speaker, Ramon Martinez, hearing him twice, too. It was, it was really, I got a lot out of that. But I think my favorite part was walking in the first time in the morning, and it's just like this whole buzz of like, back to school, and everybody's in the Hoover gym, and it was just like, you could feel the energy and the excitement that was there. So that was really enjoyable.
Yeah, I'll just add, I really enjoyed it. Thank you very much for organizing it and everybody who put it together. I love just chatting with all the different teachers and staff. And then I had the opportunity to go out on the bus and talk to the bus drivers. Yeah, I took a selfie with them. And anyway, it was just, it was just so great. It did just feel like, you know, It did just feel like, you know, it was back to school, here we are. And the only other thing I wanted to add is I have been in a number of conversations with CSBA staff, just kind of similar to what's happening at the district level, kind of getting ready for the school year. So more to report on that soon.
Went to a number of informal, school-related events, just talking with, you know, parents about what's going on there. Certainly heard a lot about air conditioning. People have a lot of opinions about that, it turns out. And I've also been aggressively recruiting to get more candidates to show up for Trusty Area Three.
Excellent. I have nothing to report.
Let's see, of course, the welcome back. I was at Ola Lunt's selfie last week on Friday. Had a good turnout for his cafecito, it was like a hundred parents. It was a hundred, it's huge. I said, Warren, maybe we should be outside. But we were inside the library and it accommodated everyone. So it was, it was a great turnout. And that's why I learned from a parent that swamp clothes don't work, they're too loud and they don't, they don't cool. Because we were talking about air conditioning, of course. So, but it was a great turnout for Warren and Patti. And just to let you know, we got notified that we will be presenting at CSBA, friends, on mental health.
Awesome.
Yeah, all right, it got selected, it got selected. On Apala, Michelle, in the sense we put it all together.
Super, okay. Thirteen point one, information on decision against partial tax on November ballot. We do have a speaker's card, but if you want to, I don't know if you want.
The information here is, is just to make the public aware that we didn't have the thrust behind our community to move forward with a parcel tax on the November ballot. With the polling that was done, support showed about sixty point five, sixty point five percent. And with, you know, that amount, a percentage of support, it definitely was going to be a difficult push to get the sixty-six point seven. So we had talked about that individually and our one-on-ones and went in the direction to not move forward because of the cost and all the work that one would need to do, especially to move it forward with this low percentage support. Plus, it's a major election, there are other things on the ballot, so.
And I think with the margin of error, it's still.
Margin of error, it's still. If we would have had like sixty-three, sixty-four, it would have been better. But even then, they said it would have been best to get sixty-five.
And just as a reminder to the community, we, in, I don't, twenty eighteen, measure H, he was eighteen. We, it, was it sixty-six point two percent? Like seventy votes short of passing.
It was really shit.
Which was really difficult to swallow. Yeah.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say, I think it was very prudent decision. We know that we need the money for our students. But just given the whole election and everything going on, in addition to the polling, we just knew there'd be a lot of noise on the ballot. So I think it makes a lot of sense to pull back, regroup and think about, you know, what are other revenue generation options? We know we're going to be talking about budget cuts because ultimately, at the end of the day, you've got to balance your budget. Some more information will be coming out that I think will help inform the community about our need and, and maybe get them more involved about what are other ideas there are for us. So anyway, thank you.
We'll go ahead and take Jessica now, I'll give you three minutes.
All right, thanks. So I, I understand and support the district's decision not to move forward with running a parcel tax on the ballot this November. But as a parent with two kids in the district, I'm also very worried about the budget cuts. I know that we're going to keep having budget cuts without funding from a parcel tax. And as we all know, the cuts that were made last year were devastating. And without a parcel tax, I worry we'll lose more teachers, more support staff jobs. We won't be able to protect small class sizes or STEM instruction. So now I'm going to take a page out of David's book, Break the Fourth Wall here, because this comment is really for other parents, staff, teachers, community members who might be on this call and share these worries. Because there is another option to get a parcel tax on a future ballot. So we, as a community, can run a parcel tax as a citizens initiative. So if we do a citizens initiative for a parcel tax, we'd only need fifty-one percent of the votes to get it passed, rather than two-thirds vote, which is what we need if it's run by the district. So if anyone is interested in working on that with me, you can email me, my email is S I C A, that's the last four letters of Jessica, at live dot com, L I V E. So it wouldn't happen by this November, but we could proactively get this set up for the next election. So if anyone's on the call who's interested, let me know.
Thanks for being here, Jessica, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jessica, just thank you so much for your parent leadership. You've been extraordinary in so many ways, supporting the students in the school district.
And, and for your stamina for sitting here tonight. Yeah, I was going to provide this comment, I appreciate it. I just wanted to echo what Elisa said, that this is, you know, I understand the decision and it's a prudent decision. It's disappointing. And it comes at a time where it's like, with the COVID funding and the extra federal funds, we kind of sort of got to smell what fully funding schools could actually start to look like. And now to see it just ripped away. And it's, you know, I hate that the reaction is always just cut, 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 right? There has to be, you know, other ways to be able to find revenue and be able to put that out and put those initiatives in. So I think that ways that people can band together to figure out what's, what is the alternative to it? Right now, we're not going to have any choice for this year, right? There's not going to be an alternative for it. But we got to see kind of what the programs could look like. We know the importance of these programs. We see it from the community, we know it. And, you know, the alternatives are kind of, they're, right now, we don't have an alternative in front of us. But looking for those alternatives, I think is an important thing to do.
I wish there was just some way we could pay teachers more and hire more great teachers for our students. Like, well, there is a way, there are ways that are out there, so.
Thank you for that. Thirteen point two, information on Samhita County Investment Fund. Questions? Thank you, thirteen point three, information on Samhita County Investment Fund, sorry, July twenty twenty-four, next. All right, thank you. Correspondence? Emails about AC?
Ditto, yeah.
I think that's all I've got.
Yeah.
All right, fifteen point one, possible other business, suggested items for future agenda. We have a lot coming up. Changes to the board meeting's calendar. All right, that moves us to adjourn in the meeting if we can get it done before nine o'clock.
I'm going to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. Fifteen seconds to go.
Perfect.
Oh.